Four thirty this meeting order. We done had everything. This is on. This is on the road closing. Okay, this is on road closing and abandoning a portion of Corbett Road. This is a request by Rusty Tatum representing landowners adjoining both sides of Corbett Road to close and abandon a twelve thousand two hundred and five feet more or less portion of said road. The proposed road closing, abandoning is located in Land Lot 282, 271, 270, and 237 of the eighth landis. Ware County Planning Department transfers this request for road closing to Ware County Commission for consideration. Now, we have any comments on, is Mr. Tatum here that's trying to have a place? Would you come up and tell us why you want to close it?
Got a little bit prepared for y'all. First off, good afternoon. My name is Rusty Tatum. I'm the land manager for Ivy Forest Property slash Pineside LLC. I've been employed there for about six and a half years now. I'd like to thank y'all that took the time to come out and see personally why I'm making the request and those of you that couldn't for taking the time to speak with me on the telephone. I feel it's my duty as a manager to protect the property of the landowner who employs me. They have put their trust in me to oversee, manage, and protect their property, timber, and equipment. This request is not intended to offend any of the surrounding landowners. However, this project will greatly improve some of the major issues we have with the property. I'd like to explain some of the specifics. Number one, this would help reduce wildfires. People's set would appear to be warming fires at several of our intersections. Number two, this will help prevent trespassing. This is a constant problem and a huge safety and liability concern. Number three, this will help prevent theft. This is something that I've had several cases with and I have some police reports with me to back those up. We also are hit every year with palmetto berry theft. Also, this will help prevent illegal dumping of trash. Those of you that were able to personally look could see that firsthand. This will also help prevent the damage to property. I've went through and replaced numerous wooden posts with cables on them where people come in and snatch them down to gain access to the property. I've replaced those with steel gates and hope that'll, you know, be a little more of a deterrent. You're not going to keep everybody out, but it will make it a little more difficult. And lastly, the poaching of wildlife, you know, it's a safety concern, people shooting down the roads as well. All right, if you all vote to pass my request, the county will no longer be responsible for the grading and upkeep of approximately 2.25 miles of dirt road. The county will also not be responsible for the upkeep and maintenance of five cords, several substantial water crossings. If y'all passed, vote to pass my request, I will be able to eliminate seven entrances on Ivy Forest property and two entrances on the D and G property. This will greatly decrease the possibility of illegal activity. The placement of this closure will still allow anyone wishing to travel Corbett Road to access Highway 122 or Highway 84 with an alternate route. This alternate route will include the use of the Footlog Road and Maynor-Wasbourn Road and will only increase the distance by approximately one half mile or approximately two and a half miles depending on the starting point. There is also another route, be it Corbett Road to Sweat Farm Road to Tooten Road and then to Ammons Road, which is approximately five miles long. Again, I want to appreciate, let y'all know I appreciate y'all's time.
Thank you. I know, I know where that road's at and I do use that road occasionally myself. Going back to, we got people living on other end of it and on this end. And we do go through there occasionally when seasonally planning calls. But is anybody against it or for it?
Yes, I live at the end of Corbett Road and I've been there for almost twenty-six years. And we rode down the whole road yesterday and didn't find but one thing that had been dumped, which has been there for years and years and hunting and stuff, poaching, whatever you call it. It used to, years ago, it was, we did have a little problem with it, but since the Youngs and the Smiths moved down there, I don't think we have much of it because if I hear a shot, I message them. If they hear a shot, they message me. And if it ain't one of us deer hunting or something or shooting a gun, then the gang warden's out there in a few minutes. And we've never, when we first moved there, we had a ladders, deer hunting ladders, stands stole. But we know who got it, our neighbor, which is in prison now. But we've never had anything stole. And the meeting at four thirty, there was a lot. My other three neighbors wanted to come, but of course, they at work. And I think some of them may had made some phone calls to the county commissioner about it. And lots of people don't know because the signs is way down the dirt road and not at the ends of the road, so most people don't even know about the closure. But the county spent a lot on that road, you know, taxpayers. But I am against it. We ride that road through there often. We fish it to the creeks and we won't be able to do that with the grans. But if you ride that now on that dirt road, I bet you hit as clean as any dirt road you seen as far as anything being dumped or trashed or anything. Because I go down Ammons Road a lot too because I clean houses for Doug and Harriet Young and them. And they're, they have lots of problems with dumping. Because I know that one landowner there pays his help to clean up trash on that road. But ours, we don't, we have, not lately anyway, in the last few years. It's a lot better than it used to be, but I am against it. I'd hate to see what would have happened when we had that fire at Sweat Farm because our road was steady with forestry, water tanks, emergency vehicles coming through there all the time. And sometime even when we have a wreck and you can't get through or smoke, we have emergency vehicles go through there. So, and I just don't, I'm just against it. And I know my neighbor Beth Allen and Lee Alice, the one on the other side of me and Brett Arnold, all of them are, but they wasn't able to come to the meeting. But I would mention their name and I did tell them they just needed to call the commissioner, you know, and voice their opinion if they couldn't be here. But that's just my opinion. But we've lived there twenty-six years and we've never had a problem. And I know Mr. Shaw that used to be over it and we've never had a problem with anything. But I just think county road's been there and it needs to stay open.
Ma'am, could you give us your name, please? I missed it.
My name's Vicki Rowell and I live at the end of the road. I'm the first house when you turn on Corbett Road on the right.
Yes, ma'am.
And Beth Allen's on the other side and she's also against it.
What's your address? I'm sorry.
It's fifty-nine ninety-six about Austin Highway, Maynor, Georgia.
Got it.
Okay.
Do you know a lady that lives at forty-four thirty-seven Corbett Road?
What's her name?
I don't know. See, I didn't get her name, but she called and gave me that number this morning and said she was against closing that road. She said she lived in Atlanta, that she owned property on Corbett Road.
I'm not sure.
She said she owned forty-four thirty-seven Corbett Road.
Oh, yes, that is, they bought that from my son and that is his Gary Mobley's sister, but I'm not sure what her last name is, yes. They bought the Forty Acres behind me.
Right.
Yes, that's who that is, yeah. She's going to school there, but we seen her husband yesterday out there. He's a truck driver, he comes back and forth. They're fixing to build a new house there. But I'm not sure just what her, because they hadn't lived there long, yes.
She lived in Atlanta.
Yeah, yeah, that's her.
Ma'am, ma'am.
Yes.
Other than fishing, what is that, what do y'all use that road for?
We just ride back and forth. Sometimes we like, a lot of times if I, I'll go that road to go to Doug's when I clean or whatever, just go 122 because that road's a lot better than the Ammons Road going to his house or if it's just according to where we going. If I go to Millwood to the cemetery or anything, I go that road a lot, just, just different, different.
But you can leave your house because you go on the highway and go right up there to Maynor-Millwood pavement?
Yes, I can.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Schur, could he come up? Just for clarification, it was mentioned something about the signs weren't at, I guess, where, on by the highway, but according to the code regulation and everything, where are the signs supposed to be placed?
At the beginning of the closure and at the end of the closure.
Okay. So it's not like we trying to hide anything and everything?
It's also in the paper for three Saturdays as well.
Okay. Okay. I think that's all I wanted to ask you.
What is your recommendation, Dave?
To have this public hearing today and determine the public use for this property. Honestly, I didn't know what the use for it is. We, this is my first go at a opening or closing and abandoning a road that's currently open, a middle section. If you look on the second to, or the third from the last page maybe, there's a finding section and there's what we generate. Usually I answer all those questions, but on this one, I couldn't. You know, a lot of those questions to be determined at a public hearing to see how the public thinks and determine a public use for that road. You know, the county's benefit for that road closing, it would eliminate 2.2, 2.25 or 2.2 miles of road rating. And you know, that's the county benefits. I will say this, that if it is approved by the commission, that it be approved subject to the property owners of Ivy Forest dedicating a turnaround at the northern end of Corbett Road and cul-de-sac and also building that cul-de-sac to the county standards. And then also approve any, subject to any easiness that may be to allow some adjoining property owners on the south side to obtain their property. I think D and G dog hunters, they may touch a small portion of this road and they may require a small easement to access some of theirs as an existing access. They have access off Footlaw Road, but they may have to have a little bit of easement to get there. And then there's another land group that touches this, it touches the road north of the closing that has road frontage. However, there may be a small access to the south or in this closure that they've used over the past. I'm not sure the legalities of them obtaining the easement across there. I think it's access to Ivy Forest or Ivy Forest products allows them to use now, so.
Okay, Mr. Schur, couldn't we consider that sort of as a fire break? In case of bad fire or something, I mean, a graded road could be for the community.
It would be, it would act as a small, small fire break.
Yeah, it could be.
But my experience in the last fires, there won't be any block gates during a big fire with these timber companies. They have a lot of money invested in there.
Okay, Mr. Chairman. And what you answered, a couple of the question I had was about the turnaround in the cul-de-sac and my understanding that the landowner would take care of that, but you say you wanted the county standards.
If it's approved, you'd approve a substitute cul-de-sac being built and deeded to the county.
Okay. And another thing is that, you know, I rode this whole, rode back and to, went to 122, 84 and there's accessibility to get to 122 and to 84 if this closure was granted. And matter of fact, it wouldn't be, I think, by like a quarter of a mile, I mean, half a mile out the way.
I guess, I didn't measure those different accesses.
That part depends on, Mr. Burso, we, where you're going, I mean, where you going to or from?
Well, I, I understand that, but what I'm saying is from that point wherever that road closure would be, to get to 122, I think would be like a half a mile. You go a half a mile further to get to 122 from that initial point where the road will be closed at and.
What if you're trying to go to Ammons Road then?
If you're trying to go to Ammons Road?
Ammons Road, see, like, we do, we came, we go up through Ammons Road, get on the Corbett Road, go over to Footlaw and go to the GW White Lake and it's a whole lot closer to go from there now. It'd be more than any half a mile for me to go back around the golf lab and it'd be like five miles.
I would just say your job as commission on this closing and abandoning is to determine is closing the road, does it have more benefit to close the road or more benefit to leave it open? So that's your job. Does the benefit of closing it outweigh the benefit of the public? That's your job as county commissioner.
And Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind, can I read directly from the statute which has the standard that we're to consider? This is from thirty-two dash seven dash two B one. When it is determined that a section of the county road system has for any reason ceased to be used by the public to the extent that no substantial public purpose is served by it or that its removal from the county road system is otherwise in the best public interest. So that's our standard that we're to consider when determining if it, the road should be closed or not, that portion.
And that's what I'm saying, you have to weigh those options.
And right now, there are the accesses to where you can get the other roads. So it's not like if you close this road right here, you wouldn't have a way to get to 84, get to 122.
Correct.
If you close that road though, for the public, you're going to burden something.
Well, I would agree with that if it wasn't accessibility to get to 122 and 84, you know. I would definitely say that would be a burden, but in this case, right here, they have a way to get to these highways. And as far as like the general public, I mean, I guess the people that stand right in that area, but most of them, I'm pretty sure if they would just be, you know, honest about it, I don't know how many of you that just to access 122 and 84, you know.
I think the best way to determine that would be to actually let the public here speak and you weigh the comments and make your decision.
Anybody else have any comments?
Any more, I got some to say. Any more opposed?
I oppose it. I go back and to through that road all the time on my tractor and buggy and stuff to staff the highway. I'm sixty-one years old, that road's been a public road ever since I've been born. I got land at Maynor, I got land on 122. And I travel that road a good bit. I'd like for y'all to take that under consideration and thank you for your time.
Can we get your name too, sir?
Kenny Caron.
Kenny Caron?
Heron.
Heron, okay, Mr. Heron, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any more opposed?
I won't speak for Scott Graham, I'm Gary Simmons. With it also, I'm not sure if y'all know me, I've, I spent thirty years gang warden. So it's, you know, but with that, I want y'all to take consideration for whatever. But like that, one of the biggest thing is, is Scott is wanting, you know, we on both sides just like Ivy Forest. But in that also consideration is way into the, you know, the best support and what we get support for. Because the last thing that we want to eliminate Scott or I say Ivy Forest is eliminate the public where we wind up Ivy Forest gets ten thousand acres burned and we get a thousand acres burned. But like that, we do on both sides right there at Alligator Creek. And if you look at the GPS, Corbett Road actually comes off of the Maynor-Wasbourn Road. And so one of the things on that also is that what we've, I was actually talking to Rusty too, is are we, when y'all go look at this rule that is some of what we saying we ain't getting covered with the Corbett Road? Because on the GPS, our, I had it back years ago, I had a UPS, no, FedEx truck that was following the GPS and just happened, our gate was open, I was hogging in there. But one of their FedEx trucks come through and actually got stuck on our property. We actually had to get a tractor to get him pulled out. But that's one of the things that we want, that Scott wanted me to relay to y'all. Yes, we are for the closing, it will, it actually shut down, if we get it, if it gets closed, we'll do without three cables that we've got maintained that gets, that does get torn up. In fact, we just had a cable that got cut about three weeks ago. But the biggest thing is, is Scott and us do not want eliminate the public where we going to have ten, a thousand acres burnt. One of the things that, you know, where we get more support or, but like that, we are for it because because it will do without three gates for us. But I thank y'all for your time, just like, you know, thank you for your consideration too. That's what y'all elected for, to serve the public. And I know it's hard, you know, can't make each and every one of us happy. But, because I see that, I tell several y'all are for it, several, but you know, do what y'all feel and what you feel the support gives us. And thank y'all for your time.
Can I say my own name?
Thank you, Mr. Simmons.
Well, if, if they do close it, all that's going to do, if people is still going to do that, is, is it fair just for their benefit? And then it's going to put on these people that supposedly going on their property and they going to go on Maynor-Wasbourn and on Ammons Road, I mean, so.
I'd also like to say that it's way more than a quarter or a half a mile to go around if they close that portion of the road. I've been there a long time now. A quarter of a mile, a half mile ain't no way. And as far as people, I go back to you a lot, I've never seen nobody. I ain't seen anybody that's sneaking everything, I'm doing that, I'm just waiting to clear the road or not.
Yeah. Any more opposed? Anybody else oppose it?
Do you oppose it, sir? Can you hear?
Tim, you oppose it?
Yeah, I oppose it, yeah.
You oppose it?
I don't want it closed.
You oppose it.
I do too, in a way. I oppose the road closing because I got property on Gooden Bay over here and I go through there and we got property over on the, about the Kegler Road.
You're the forward, anything I ask you.
And we go through there with the hair, we come down that Corbett Road right there. I use it. So I'm not, I don't have a commission there, but.
No, no. Commissioners, I've had one call on this. A good friend of mine who lives on Corbett Road and he supports Mr. Tatum's application a hundred percent. He's saying the same thing that Mr. Tatum is saying. But even when I was on the commission there twenty-something years ago, I've never supported closing a public road if the public is using the public road. So I, I will not support closing this.
You support it, what can you say?
I do not support closing the road.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
And one thing I think we have to take consideration also is that the property owners that's wanting a closure, they on both sides of the road except for the D and G hunters.
We do own, we on both sides. We got thirty acres at Alligator Creek that the bridge is on. We got thirty acres at Alligator Creek that the bridge is on our property.
Okay.
Now you talking about it near the highway?
No, it isn't. Right there.
Or you calling Gate Creek?
I always call it Gate Creek there.
I'm on both sides of the Griffin Road, so pretty good on the way down there. I know I can't close the Griffin Road.
But I mean, like I say, I don't like them to close a portion of the road too.
The owners of the property don't even live here.
Yeah.
No, they don't even come down, about a month a year, round by skin.
Yeah, but as I said.
I don't know about this D and G, if they speak to anybody or not.
But as I understand, we're saying that they on both sides of the road on the property and it's a portion of the road. They're not talking about closing the whole road, but a portion of the road.
But it will inconvenience a lot of people. You know, you were saying one, one quarter of a mile.
Well, there's half.
It's a lot more than that.
There's a half a mile based on.
It's four and a half a mile.
That's all that happens, Chair.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Bur. You got anything, Steve?
I was called right in the middle, right in my district out there. I've had several people call on both ways, was closing it and keeping it open. Give something away, it's hard to get it back if you ever have to. I understand Rusty's point on it, you know, people going up and down that road. I used to rake pine straw out there whenever John had two kids on the property. We use that road a lot, haul the straw out of there. But I'd be putting my support to close it. I understand it. I understand why you want to close it. I mean, I got some pieces I'd like to close down by me. If it'd stop them tires from being thrown out and beer cans and the beer drinkers and all. But I don't think it's going to stop that. No matter where you close it or not, it'll get to the end of it. It'd be a dump then, you know. Mr. Tanner, what you think?
I'm for closing it.
You for closing it?
Yes, sir. Property owners request that it doesn't get used enough for what it costs us to maintain.
Well, they willing to pay the taxpayers back the money that it cost for dealing with that road and put in them Corberts and all that, that's a lot of expense for taxpayers.
Yeah, I see.
And it has been done in the past, but if we keep it, then we're going to have to keep paying for it.
And they do not grade that road that often. They grade it up where the smell is leaving and they grade it up Sweat Farm Road. And they might grade the rest of that every two or three times a year.
Put it on again, we're both on at five. Let's go. Thank y'all for coming.
Good day to John, Mr. Chairman.
And thank y'all for all coming and opposed and ones that was for it, you know.
Mr. Chairman, if we can take a motion to close the public hearing and then we'll have just a few minutes. And Mr. Moore went to get updated copies of the agenda to add this item to it, so it will be on your agenda for five o'clock.
Okay, we're going to close this public hearing and make a motion to close it.
Make a move. So I got.
Put it on it. Mr. Burso?
Aye.
Mr. Poet?
Aye.
Mr. Tanner?
Aye.
Mr. Byrne?
Aye.
Chair, but the close.